I got it, I got it. All right, everybody, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular city council meeting of January twenty-second to order. Roll call, please.
Zazada.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Seven present.
I want to let everyone know, Mr. McAdams did reach out to me ahead of time and let me know he was not gonna be able to be here. With that, we'll move on to agenda item B, the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Hybe, or Captain Hybe, can you please lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you got it, Mr. Gentry, thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item C, approval of the agenda. I take a motion to approve the agenda.
No moves.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Walker. Roll call, please.
Zazada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven I.
All right, so the agenda has been approved. Moving on to number D, or letter D, presentations. Number one, we have a summary report of the Decal School Resource Officer Program for the 2023 fall term. Chief's gonna kick it off for us, Austin.
All right, good evening, City Council Mayor, City Manager Nicholas. So, we want to follow through with a update with how we're doing with the School Resource Officer Program. And we do have members from District 428 here, and we have Superintendent Garcia Sanchez here. We appreciate you guys' support. Because we have co-created everything that we do every day when it comes to the safety of the children of the schools and with the implementing of the extra SROs which were approved by City Council. So, but before I turn it over to Commander Lakis, because I want him and I want our School Resource Officer, Officer Remnas, to give their testimonies in regard to what and how the School Resource Officer Program is really, really working. I did want to say that the challenge has been to work together as a unit. And from everything that I can ascertain historically, that this is probably one of the best working arrangements, partnerships that we have ever had with the school district, meaning the police department with District 428. So, very excited about that. I think we're doing things the right way. One of the reasons why I say that is because our SROs are actually doing the job that they were required to do. One of those things, life coach, being a mentor. We, and I'll, I know I'll embarrass her a little bit, but Officer Remnas, as we know, last year she was, she was given the Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award from the Veterans Group Forty and Eight. So, she was also up for the National Award for School Resource Officers. So, although we didn't take home the gold last year, Ally's, yeah, we're going for it. So, so I put a lot of pressure, not just on her, but all five of our SROs are doing an amazing job. They are so important to the framework of what the schools do every day. And I think as long as we move in the direction that they continue to be life coaches and mentors and not the police, that is something we do not, we would prefer that they do those two duties, life coach, mentor, and not be the police. If long as we're progressing in that direction, then we're doing things the right way. And I believe that wholeheartedly. So, I want to again thank District 428 for being here, for supporting us and helping us co-create everything we do for the safety of the children of the schools at District 428. I'm gonna bring Commander Lakis up because he prepared the report that you guys have in your packets, and he'll give you some highlights from the year as it is today. So, Commander Lakis.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, and thank you for having us. Steve Lakis, I'm the commander with the Decal Police. I oversee our School Resource Officers. It's one of my duties. But obviously, the report that was prepared, it's pretty self-explanatory as far as statistics and some comments in there, so if there's any questions on that, please feel free to ask. But overall, what I will say, oh, and I'm sorry, there was one error that I accidentally listed as Clinton Rosette being where the vape detectors were installed. That's actually at Huntley Middle School. So, that was a mistake on my part, but if, if you need a clarification on that. Overall, what I've noticed in the last year, a lot more consistent reporting. That's something that, you know, we've worked hard with the district and the administrators to make sure we're notified of when incidents are happening. And even though for the majority of these incidents, they're being handled internally through school discipline, we still want to be aware. Because a lot of times, what you don't see on here is stuff that happens outside of school. So, if, if a fight at school spills over into a bus stop, or spills over into a fight up in a residential area, SROs wouldn't be dealing with that. So, we want to make sure we get the proper intel information over to the schools. Another thing you'll notice, I mean, even though some numbers were up, mail-ins or what we call summonses, where the students would have to come in for some restorative practice or justice, they're down. For example, there's more cannabis violations at the high school list fall, but there's less citations. Now, typically, what we would do is let the school handle discipline on the first offense, if it's a kid that hasn't been in trouble before. And then down the road, we would try to get them into some sort of restorative, you know, whether it's community service, whether it's counseling, we refer a lot of kids to the early risk assessment program, things like that. But I think that's, that's a measure, the number that it's increased, I think that's kind of a show of how security is doing a really good job, a lot better awareness and a lot better detection of what they're doing. So, they're catching a lot of these things. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean it's turning into a criminal violation or charge, but they are catching these things. Like I said, you'll notice this year, we only had twelve summonses issued in the schools, whereas last year, same time period in the fall, we had twenty-nine. So, that's, that's one anecdotal thing. But I'll summarize by saying that when I talk to the SROs, they tell me this year has been better than last year. Last year was better than the year before. So, obviously, any amount of crime, any problems is huge. I have three kids in the district. I take children's safety very seriously. I spend most of my time checking on the schools, driving around, being that extra patrol and trying to be engaged. But, you know, they're doing a great job. You know, another example I'll give you is, we had a very difficult case last year. One of our SROs was able to talk to this young lady who didn't want to disclose, went through a whole VSI, which is the victim interview, victim-sensitive interview, didn't disclose. But she felt so comfortable with Officer Sorenson, she ended up telling her facts that were obviously used to prosecute this very serious charge, you know. So, they, they build that kind of relationship with students. And with that, like I said, I'll take any questions, but I do want to turn it over to Officer Allison Remnas to explain some of the stuff they do as well.
Hi, good evening. I just want to thank you for having the team out tonight. I'm not the numbers person. I'm not the statistics person. I'm the elementary SRO. So, I don't deal with fights. I don't deal with drugs. I don't have any occasion to do that. But I do have a chance to do a lot of our community engagement things, a lot of the things that we are supposed to be doing. In a perfect world, we shouldn't have to take any police enforcement action. We should be doing what we call officer-friendly type things. So, I do have a presentation to show you, just a few pictures of the things that we're able to do this year that we may not have been able to do in years past because the work is obviously being spread out amongst more officers. And we're seeing the code of conduct being enforced. We're seeing things being handled appropriately. So, we are really able to spend more of our time on the fun things, which is what I'm gonna show you. So, apologize for my design choices, but when you ask the elementary SRO to do this, this is what happens. So, we always have to get a team picture. We, we like to do the first day of school picture, and then, you know, we've got that big game coming up on Friday with that other team from that other town that I'm not gonna talk about. But we always have to make sure to get a picture of that also. So, this is our Toys for Tots charity basketball game. It's something that we do in conjunction with the school district, specifically Huntley Middle School. We have a basketball game. It's police and fire versus school staff. We, we won this year, as we have every year except for one year.
Last year, we won.
Yes, they, they won last year. This is this year. And we brought the trophy back this year. But the SROs were not very talented in basketball, but we are very talented in making fools of ourselves. So, Officer Cheese in a skirt, everybody showed up to see that. The basketball game was just extra. Officer Cheese is at Clinton Rosette Middle School, and he's a fan favorite. And every time I see middle school kids out and around, they want to ask me, do I know Officer Cheese? And I'm like, do you know Officer Ally is what the question should be. But he was a good sport. He let the kids at Clinton Rosette pie him in the face. It was a reward program where they get points for, you know, following the expectations, being respectful, doing the things that they know they're supposed to do. And then they could use those points to pie someone in the face, and he was a good sport and let them do that to him. At our high school, I'm also seeing a lot more positive interaction at the high school, being that there's two full-time officers in that building. They're able to do things like Officer Gordon on the left there, he's judging the cookie contest in foods class, right? Yep. Chocolate chip won, which I guess, but. And then Officer Sullivan there on the right, this young man who's in the transitional program, that's a program for students who have aged out of the school system. But they, they continue to go to DHS and learn sort of life skills and things like that. He used his points to take a picture with any staff member in the building, and he chose Officer Sullivan. So, it was super cute. I hadn't included that. And then we've just got pictures of, there's Officer Sorenson on the left on Halloween. Police officers get extra candy with us. So, and then doing community engagement nights, that's our family night at Huntley Middle School. So, Officer Sorenson and Officer Cheese participated in that. And then, like I said, I'm the elementary SRO, so I get to get artsy every once in a while. Probably our biggest event of the year is Shop with a Cop. And it's not specific to the School Resource Officers, but it is, we are the ones that put the planning into it. So, Officer Sullivan does the majority of the planning on that. We're responsible for getting the funding for it. We're responsible for working with the school district to come up with some names of some students and some families who need a little bit extra around the holidays. So, if you don't know about it, it's just the school district nominates a list of students. We take them shopping at Target. We give each student a hundred dollars to spend. We help them spend it because we're very good at that. And then they, they have something to open on the holidays if, you know, they might not get that chance otherwise. Then our turkey disguise contest, those are some of our winners from this year. Every, every fall around Thanksgiving, we have kids in the school district pick a turkey. They disguise their turkey so that he won't be eaten on Thanksgiving. And then we pick three winners, and they always get a copy of the book that our contest is based off of, and then a swag bag from the police department. So, that's one of our happy things. Halloween, again, I don't know how Officer Sorenson convinced Officer Sullivan to wear that, but she did. She's very persuasive. And then, that's my famous donut costume on the right, and one of my favorite students at Brooks, who could not contain herself. And so, that's, those are just a few of the happy things that we're able to do. As the elementary SRO, like I said, I don't have to focus on the unpleasant things, and so I have a lot more time to do things like this. What I'm, what I believe is that when you put all of the police activity aside, what we have are a lot of kids who don't feel seen or loved at home. So, when they come to school, I think that's our number-one job, is to be an extra adult in the building who sees them and who loves them. So, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Any numbers questions, I'm gonna deflect to the big bosses behind me. But if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Counsel, any questions, attorneys?
Yeah, I do.
Alderman Walker?
All right, I'm on Lakis. So, I just want to ask, like, so, do you think the number has went down because we have an additional SRO at the high school, and that's why the numbers, you know, are where they're at? And secondly, do you think you guys are full staff, and would you guys need another one, or you think you're good to go?
Well, good question. Obviously, a lot of my, my thoughts are, you know, anecdotal based on things I'm seeing. It is a huge help to have that extra officer because a lot of times what happens is if it's just the one, or when it was the one, and at the time he was tied up, and then something else happens, there's not that physical deterrent that's gonna prevent the fight. Or, you know, when stuff are brewing, and let's say, you know, let's say there is a fight, and let's say Officer Sullivan's dealing with the kids, talking to the parents, things like that, you still have Officer Gordon now to make sure nothing else happens. Or the after, the after-fights, you know, the, the stuff that spirals out of control leading up to that. So, I think that's been a huge deterrent. The other thing is the communication with the, the school. The district has been great, kind of spearheading everything with us, making sure we're all on the same page. And making sure the reporting is accurate, making sure we're getting notified on things that need to be brought to our attention, and then, and then, of course, the follow-up stuff, making sure things are in place. You know, the, in my mind, the School Resource Officer, even though Officer Ally does a fantastic job, the number-one thing they're still supposed to be doing is protecting kids, okay, you know, preventing that tragedy from ever happening. And they're doing a great job of that. We're also incorporating, teaching all of our younger officers, we're getting a whole, as you know, a whole lot of officers on board, but we work together with the school district. So, we got, everybody's got a key fob now. We don't have to wait for somebody to let us in if there's an emergency. There's things like that that we've coordinated that have been great. But then there's also been a different code of conduct, which I think has been helpful. A lot, a lot of kids that are being held accountable now aren't back, okay? I'm hearing way more kids that are committing violent acts, like attacking a teacher or striking somebody, things like that, that are getting expelled, or they're getting outplaced, or whatever the school does. That's their, you know, business. But I think that's been a lot more consistent as well, to where we're not, we're not seeing the same kids that are just causing problems and disrupting school for everybody else.
So, do you think you guys are fully staffed, or would you think, would you feel more comfortable with extras, or I just wanted?
Well, I would always say having more is always gonna be better because, I mean, just imagine how much more we could have if we had a second elementary officer doing all these extra programs and the outreach. Because, I mean, not only are they doing the things in school, but they're also planning everything for out-of-school as well, National Night Out, like I said, Shop with a Cop. I think there was a hundred and fifty kids that were invited to come to that event. There's so many other things that they do. So, it would always be great, but it's a team, you know, the, just like, you know, we work together as a great team with the school board and, or the school district. The police department has other resources that, or other groups that probably need it. So, I'll let the chief decide on that. More is always appreciated, but again, it's also prioritizing.
If I could have chief step up there.
Alderman Perkins has a question, too.
Go ahead. Hey, so, like I asked Commander Lakis, so, would you think that, you know, the schools need another additional SRO officers? Would you personally feel comfortable with that?
At this time, I think we're staffed where we need to be, at this time. So, now, of course, this is fluid. I mean, things could change. But just speaking, from speaking to the School Resource Officers, they feel comfortable. I feel comfortable. And at the end of the day, we want the parents to feel comfortable. I think, like I said, we, we meet with District 428 on a regular basis. They appear to be comfortable as well, so I don't want to speak for superintendent. But from our conversations, we feel like we're where we should be in staffing. However, it's fluid. If things were to change, if we saw a spike in, let's say, violent behavior at the schools, which, let's just be transparent about it. It's exactly how we got to the SRO, SRO numbers we have today. Because we saw something that we had, really hadn't seen before. And when you have an officer who comes in your office and he looks beaten down, and he can't do it alone, it's, it was our job to make sure that we added more personnel. So, we could do our jobs effectively at the school, which is provide safety and be life coaches and mentors. So, to answer your question, sir, right now, I think we're fine.
Alderman Perkins?
My question's a little, little broader, and I'm not sure who the, the right person is to answer it. But I think the, the direction of the numbers is, is important. It's important that the numbers are going in the right direction. And I think the, the relationship, I'll say, is a little unique. Unique in the, in the sense where essentially the school district is contracting the police department for their security. So, I guess my question is, is what next to ensure that the numbers keep going in the right direction? And how, how will you guys be collaborating to develop a plan to do that?
Right. And, and I guess to my point, and I know we spoke about this briefly, but just for everyone else, is, progress is everything. I mean, we're looking for progress. If we have five less fights than we did have, than we did, did last year, progress, we're moving in the right direction. If they can be impactful, like they're being in those slides more, that's impactful. We want to be a point where they are just to protect from outside threats, you know, which, which Commander Lakis was speaking about. That's really, when you get down to it, they're supposed to be doing life coaching, mentoring for the students who don't have that in their family. Some of us, you know, a lot of the children have it. They have parents who, who teach them life lessons and, and mentor them. However, there are children there every day who do not have that in their life at all. And these five have been stepping up and doing that. And we would prefer that they spend most of their time doing that and protecting them from any outside threats. That is where they should be. But to your point, Alderman Perkins, we're looking for progress and steady progress, consistent progress. What that number would look like, I couldn't give you a number with, that I would feel comfortable with. As we speak about, and we'll talk about crime in general, and, you know, once we get to the annual report in a couple of months. But to me, the number you want in crime is zero. But are we, you know, that's the number you want to ascertain. That's the one, that's the one you want. I mean, you know, so if we can get to a point where we have zero fights in a school, then I think we're winning. But as long as we're progressing in that direction, you know, and they're able to do what they're really supposed to be doing, what their job description really entails, then I think we're winning. And at the end of the day, just from my conversations with the five SROs with the school districts, we're going in the right direction. And, I mean, I, I think we have to stand on that.
But, but I guess a little more specifically, what I'm, what I'm driving at is, is this year, one of the things when, when we added the additional SROs, we, we said we want to have, we want to revise the code of conduct.
Which we've done.
And we've done that. So, that, that caused some, some action.
Sure.
You know, are, are you guys collaborating in a way to determine next corrective actions to put in place for next year's subsequent years to ensure that we're continuing to push that?
Yeah, so.
Because I understand, I understand the progress.
Yeah, I got you, yeah. And that's every, but every meeting is like that. I mean, every meeting is a collaborative meeting to how we get better, right? So, I mean, and there are situations, there are problems that, that have not even arisen yet. We don't, that haven't come to our, to the forefront. So, those things, you know, of course, we can't attack those. But the ones that we do know, we have made those corrections, just like I think Commander Lakis was talking about, access to the buildings. That was an issue, and now we corrected that. So, I mean, so every time we meet, you know, we try to ascertain how we can get better collaboratively with, between ourselves and District 428 for the safety of the children. So, so to your point, every meeting, I mean, is really a progress meeting. How can we get better? What can we do better? What can the PD do to help? What can the school district do to help the PD? And those conversations are had on a regular basis. We have standing meetings every month, just to assess exactly what you're talking about. And at the end of the day, whenever we get to a point, whenever that might be, and, you know, whether we're all here or not, to a point where we feel like we have a safe environment, and we don't have to have these annual meetings, then we won the game. But we're not there yet. And I think we all will attest to that, myself, I know the superintendent will attest to that as well. We have work to do. But we're working extremely hard to make sure that we're going in the right direction to make the school district as safe as we can make it.
Alderman, no, Zazada, go ahead.
Sure, thanks. So, I've got a handful of questions. Sorry, I didn't really think about who should answer them.
That's okay.
So, there were two big changes I saw at the beginning of the school year at the high school that I really was impressed with, that I felt like were gonna be game changers. And I think that they may have been, and I'm curious to know what other things were game changers. So, I've got three high schoolers. And two things that I saw that were done were, one, making sure that everyone has an ID all the time.
Yes.
And two, not allowing the doors, other than like the front door, to be opened during the school day.
Yes.
So, those felt like big game changers. Were there any other rules that you felt like, you know, whomever wants to answer this appropriately, but any other rules that felt like they were amazing?
So, I will just expound on the two that you mentioned. The, the first one was a, really a cultural shift. So, and this started from the top, and I'm gonna give credit where credit is due because Superintendent Sanchez was, Garcia Sanchez was one of the main ones who, who drove that. Because her idea was that if I have to wear ID, so do you. And it, and, and I think once, but it was hard because people, I mean, they went through, students were going through COVID. A lot of things got dropped by the wayside through COVID. You allow a lot of things to happen. People were able to carry backpacks and things that normally would not occur, and IDs fell by the wayside. So, made a conscious effort to make sure that that was put in place, that everyone had to have ID from the principal, well, let's go even further, from the superintendent of schools to the youngest kid that can actually, that should be wearing an ID in the school system. So, so I think that was extremely important, but it was a cultural shift. It had to be done, and I think it made an extreme impact, as you said, like you said. The other one was a safety issue. Of course, the less access we can have into the buildings is gonna benefit our SROs. Like I said, the school, I mean, that's a huge high school. We have two SROs in that building. And, you know, now, we do have some security agents in the, in the, in the building as well who can help, but that's, that's a lot of space for them to cover. So, that was something that we co-created as well. Hey, how, the same conversation, how can we get better? Let's limit access. And we did that. And then I'll, I will, I'm gonna turn this over to SRO Sullivan and SRO Gordon. Anything you guys want to speak on as far as school changes?
I was gonna bring up one thing. Another thing that we thought was fantastic that schools have been doing is like a, a points, if you are not performing in school, or if you're skipping class, you don't get to come to the extracurricular activities. And that's been a huge help because, you know, like at football games, like, we haven't had issues. Kids that aren't, you know, coming to class, or skipping, or, you know, suspended, don't get to participate in those extracurricular activities. So, I think that's been a huge game changer for the after-school events as well.
And it, it's to that point where, you know, you have one who's causing problems during the week, we're not gonna give you another chance to cause problem at another event that you shouldn't be at. And the majority of the times, when you do have a problem at those after-school events, it's the same person that you suspend. So, so that, I think that, like the commander said, very impactful. But, but thank you for making note of those, too, because I, I think the culture changed with IDs, as small as that might seem, it made a difference. Because that meant that everybody was being held accountable for identification, identifying themselves as a student in a school to keep the, the other students safe.
Alderman Walker, you had another question?
Well, I have, well, I'm just having.
Oh, you have another one?
Oh, you got it.
Sorry. You know, I might have overlooked it in the report, but was there a vape detector installed at the high school, too?
Not yet. That, that was something that was, they, it started through, through the Safety Task Force meeting, if anybody wants to comment on that. But Huntley was like the test. It was like a pilot. And my understanding is that's gonna, that's gonna get expanded throughout the middle schools, too, and, and the high school.
Great.
Not yet.
Okay, last question. So, as far as staffing that we just discussed, you know, we're talking about adding an additional school, and, you know, obviously, wintertime is a low, low crime, you know, behavior issue time anyway, like as a, yeah, right. But, um, yeah. So, you know, do we foresee with the addition of another school, more need, et cetera?
And I, and I think that's an assessment to piggyback off Alderman Walker's question about staffing as well. That's an assessment we'll have to make at that time. And I will sit down and we will co-create that as well. I mean, we, like I said, I want to sit down with the superintendent and her staff and, and the principals and really see if that, if that need is there. We might be able to maneuver and shift some of our personnel, and, and that might be the way to go. But I think we're gonna, we're gonna wait, and, and we'll make an assessment as we get closer to that.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Alderman Walker?
Okay, so, I don't mean no disrespect to anybody.
Yep, sorry.
At all. I mean, so.
At all. I mean, so I'm sitting here and I'm taking my alderman hat on, throwing it to the side, I'm putting my daddy hat on. I mean, you guys are talking like everything is going so much, first of all, I respect with the SROs, you guys are great. Officer Cheese, my daughter love you, and I feel comfortable, you know, until he's beloved. But my thing is this, we're sitting in a room and we're talking about how good things are. And on the streets, that's not what's being said. I mean, I know, you know, parents aren't in the schools writing down, you know, statistics and this and that, but, I mean, we're sitting up here acting like everything is doing so much better. Now, I do understand Rome wasn't built in a day. I, I truly understand that. But I'm not gonna sit up here as an alderman and just, you know, laugh and giggle and act like, you know, the school district is just doing everything they're supposed to do and everything is, you know, on firm footing, because I just don't hear that, or I, and I just don't see that. Now, I, I understand this going in the right direction. I get that, yes. And like I said, it wasn't built in a day, and like I said, you guys are doing well. But we have to understand that, you know, we, th- these are our babies, you know? I mean, and, and some of us have kids, like, you know, all the lady down there said. So I just feel that, you know, I mean, I really want you full staff, even as a dad, you know? And for you to sit up here and say you think you're fine, I mean, you would know better than me, because you know the numbers. However, that's just not what I'm hearing from some of these high school kids, you know? And, and for some of these junior high kids, I'm just not hearing that. So it's hard for me as an alderman and as a father to sit up here and hear that everything is doing so much better when I'm hearing something totally different from kids that are actually on the front line. So that's the only problem that I'm having right now.
All right, and now, and I will speak to, at no point did we say we were perfect, no point did we say the report was completely fine. We're, we're making progress, and that's what we said. So it's progress, everyday progress. And, and, and you're right, Rome was not built in a day. You, we're doing everything we can to make school districts safer for the schools. At this point, we feel like we have enough staffing. And I base that on my conversations with the school resource officers, okay? Initially, we didn't think we had enough staffing, and that's why we added. So I have, we will do another assessment at some point with the school district to see if more staffing is needed. But at this moment, we feel like the staffing is, is appropriate for the school district at this time based on the conversations we have with, and, and here's the other thing, I will say this. There aren't, I can count on, on one hand, when we've had to respond, meaning outside of school resource officers to the schools. That means the rank and file, the DeKalb Police Department. So that's an indicator that if things were, were bad, we will be sending officers to those schools on a regular basis. We're not doing that.
So you're saying it's good then?
I'm telling you that, I'm telling you that we're making progress. I'm telling you, there's no, at no point have we, in the, in the last year, have we had to send officers over to the school district unless, for only reason we've had to do that, I went to the schools, the high schools, because we were short staffed, uh, because one of the officers couldn't be there today. So I showed up, another officer, uh, and the rank and file showed up, and we were just there for security. It wasn't there for call service. We were just there for police presence. It was, you know, and we showed up and there, nothing occurred. We had a great relationship with the kids. What I'm trying to tell you is that we not, we are not sending the rank and file police department to the schools on a regular basis to handle anything. That means that the five school resource officers are handling these situations without the assistance of the rank and file, the Cal Police.
And the additional security officers, the school district.
Right. So, so that alone shows an indicator of the progress that we're making. Because if, to be honest with you, Alderman Walker, if, if things were going that bad, we will be responding full force at the schools to handle these situations. That has not been the case. And, and, and they could speak for themselves and tell you that themselves. How many times they have got on the radio and asked for more assistance at DeKalb High School, at Huntley School? That has not occurred.
If you say so, Chief Alderman.
I'm just listening to the radio, sir.
There you go.
So, Alderman Larson?
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's been many years since I was in school, but back then, we had fights. I went to an all-girls school. We had really bad fights. Um, what I really wanna know, because I don't think you'll ever stop kids fighting in schools. There's always gonna be.
For sure.
The push starts to a shove and fistfight. But our, our society is not how it was when I went to school. And my question to you is, in one of these horrible situations that have occurred at other schools, how secure do you feel with the DeKalb School District and the Police Department? That you've got a plan, that you're as safe as you guys can be right now for all the kids that are in a school on any given day?
So you're talking about active shooter situations, so you're talking about a threat outside of the building. So we feel extremely, extremely secure with the plans that we have in place. We, our officers are equipped to handle active shooter situations. They go through drills consistently, like every other officer with the DeKalb Police Department. So we believe that we have an unbelievable plan in place to prevent active shooter situations at any school in the District 428 zone.
Thank you.
And that, and, and that, and I, I speak with confidence about that. And before I leave, I wanna bring up Officer Gordon, Officer Sullivan, Officer Sorensen, Officer Dinsberger, which people call Officer Cheese. Officer Remus, come on up. Come on up. Oh, yeah. So, um, I bring them up because, first of all, I wanna thank them for doing an amazing job. Every day, they work their butts off. They work their butts off to make sure that every student in that building is safe, every student is taken care of. All of them have their own children, but they have that in them, they have that heart to tend to other children that are not theirs. So we vetted them. The reason why they are in the positions that they are in is because we vetted them. We have the right people in these positions, and I, and I can, like I said, I can say that with confidence. Every day when I, and they allow me to come to some things, which is great, so I get to see this firsthand. I really do. And I appreciate the job that they do on a daily basis, okay? And I, and when I tell you that those schools and those kids are protected, I'm telling you, I look at these five, and I want to assure everyone in this room that they are protected by these five. And whenever they need more than that, we're coming. All they have to do is pick up the mic and say, we need more help, and we're coming. So I just, I want that to be known to all the residents in the city of DeKalb who have children in the school district. The DeKalb Police Department is here to make them safe every day, and we're doing it. Progress, we're making progress. Like Alderman Walker, like you said, Rome was not built in a day. We are gonna, we're gonna have some problems. We're gonna have some issues. But we, I can tell you this, we're going to attack them, and we're going to fix them, and we're gonna work on anything that can help us be a better school district and make these, you know, all the students safe in this, in the school district as well. Thank you again to District 428 for coming and supporting the SROs, because they spend more time with them than they do with us, and it, it means a lot that you guys showed up today to assist us. So I'd really wanna give the SROs a round of applause. I appreciate you.
So, I'd like to just wrap up really quick. I remember working with Chief Byrd, City Manager Nicholas, Superintendent Garcia Sanchez, her team, her security team. This is two, maybe two and a half years ago. And we were talking about this issue, and the incidences we were having at the high school were, were significant. And I remember Officer Hoy, and I remember that whole situation and this whole conversation about what are we going to do? And all of us collaboratively came together. We had some heated conversations, because everyone was passionate about, let's make sure we do the right thing. And at that meeting, we heard the school district talk about a new student code of conduct. We heard the school district talk about accountability matrix. In our IG era, in our governmental agreement, to bring in more SROs, that's what we wanted to see as well. I love how you use co-created, because we really did the expansion of SROs. And what are we gonna do as a community between the city and the school district? We co-created a, a system that we were hoping gonna be, that was gonna be effective. But we also said the city had its own responsibility as well. We had segments in our community where our kiddos, when they would come home, came home to an incredibly tough atmosphere. And I'm not just talking the parents, I'm talking the atmosphere, the apartment building they might have been in. And how could we ever expect our youth to be in an environment like that, day in and day out, and then come to our school district and be able to be normal? It was an unrealistic expectation. So on our end, we also, just like the school district, tried to figure out what can we do? That was hiring more officers. That was aggressively going after. I, I think we are an incredibly welcoming community, and we are a community that everyone belongs. There's behaviors that don't. And we've been working really hard to make sure that everyone feels like they're welcome in DeKalb and they belong in DeKalb. But if you have certain behaviors, that is not who we are, and that is not what we tolerate. I think what we're hearing is a combination between what the city has done, but I have to give huge kudos to the school district. And how, and I've heard this over and over again from parents, and my wife teaches at DeKalb High, that ultimately, the changes that have been out there have been significant, and you all have lived up to your end of things. That accountability is there at a level it hasn't been. I think that's why we're seeing, what I'm hearing from our SROs and the chief and Commander Lakus is, we are seeing improvement. Are we there? No. Are we there as a community? No. But that progress is something that I definitely think we should celebrate. And I just wanted to make sure up here, I gave the superintendent and your entire team a, a lot of credit for how far we've come in a short time, but also recognize how far we all need to go. But it's together that we're gonna move forward in something like this, and I could look forward to continuing to working with your team on how we can make DeKalb the safest place for our students. So, thank you, everyone. Thank you to our SROs, and thank you to the school district. How about another round of applause? All right, so we have a packed agenda. You in no way, shape, or form have to stay here if your agenda item has happened. I know our SROs and department got a lot to do. I know our school district has a lot to do. So we do not take offense by that in any way, shape, or form. All right, moving on to Agenda Item E, Public Participation. We have none. Moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments. Number one, reappointing Julie Jesmer to the Citizens Environmental Commission for a two-year term through December 31st, 2025, and appointing her as chair. Can I have a motion to approve Julie Jesmer?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Larson. Any comments or questions? If you don't know Julie, she is an absolute rock star. She is the head of Trax, Trash Squirrels. I couldn't think of a better chair for that commission, so that's super awesome. Do we need roll call on these, or can I do all in favor, or what do we gotta do? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, same sign. All right, moving on to number two, reappointing Kate Noriko and Veronica Orjil to the Citizens Police Review Board, each for a two-year term through December 31st, 2025. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Perkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I?
Nays, oh, I was gonna say.
Yeah, can I, uh, I got a word to say.
Okay.
If we could on these appointments. So this is my issue with some of these appointments or some of these reappointments. So we, I, I understand that it's, and, um, City Attorney, Mr. Rose, if you could tell me if I'm wrong or right, but I do understand that the mayor appoints whatever, right? But, um, I think us just finding out on a Thursday, a couple of days before, you know, that we're supposed to vote on it, I just think that maybe it should be brought to, you know, the council beforehand, so we can do our due diligence. And I don't know how that really works. Is, is, would that, would that be fair for me to ask, or?
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't, or it doesn't go that way. Because here's my thing, like, um, for me, you know, for this next item too, or whatever, you know, I just feel like with the Citizen Review Board, because that's such a very special board. And I was on it, and I just feel that that's be a board that is a Citizen Review Board. So it should be the citizens, it should kinda get rotated, you know, so we can get more blood and more passion on it. Because when things get stale, and we have a lot of boards in DeKalb that are just stale, and I, quite honestly, they should get, just get rid of them altogether. But I just think that's one of those boards where we have to keep new blood and, and, and new passion on it, because that's a very important board, and it's a board that I hold deep to my heart. So going forward, I don't know how we could do this, but I would like maybe on, 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 on all appointments. If, 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 I guess what I'm asking is if they could be brought to, you know, the council so we can, you know, do our due diligence, because it takes a couple of weeks. Because I remember Alderman Perkins, I think it was a finance, the finance board or something, you kinda threw out there, you know? You would like to know if they've had, you know, a background in that. So I would like to know, you know, who we're dealing with, you know, just going forward, if possible. All due respect.
Absolutely, no, absolutely. And just so y'all realize, the amount of time and energy it takes to find people in the community that are gonna step up, volunteer their time for a commission is significant. In fact, it, it takes a lot of time on my end. And in many ways, I felt like I'm shouldering that burden to find all these people. I get it from some commissions, I get some recommendations, and I've had it from a couple of council members. So I would charge each and every one of us to always be trying to recruit. We've got finance, we've got HRC, we've got Citizens Police Review Board, we've got Enhancement Commission, we've got Environmental Commission. Uh, I've got a bunch of appointments coming forward for the, the Code Enforcement, Historical Society, Economic Development Corporation. I mean, it literally goes on and on and on. And getting those fully staffed is a challenge in and of itself. And then also with the rotation that happens, people just coming and going, it's tough. So I am always welcome. I'm just mostly embracing people that want to come and serve. I usually do interview everybody, especially for the Library Board. I did that the recent round. And the Finance Advisory Commission. But this is something that I would encourage each and every council member to help us figure out who we're gonna have and who we're gonna fill. Yes, Alderman Verbic.
And to Alderman Walker's point, maybe there was a way to circulate the openings to council?
Yeah.
Council, what could you do to help to fill those roles? Because I agree, it shouldn't be all on you, so.
That is easy to do. Ruth Scott provides me a beautiful list on a semi-regular basis of all the openings that have been out there. So absolutely. I, I'll, I'll open it up from that perspective. To get it to multiple reviews and interviews and all that, that just further complicates and challenges it. But I think if we're all actively involved in recruitment, that'd be great.
Okay, now, I agree with you on that. But, you know, going for this one, you know, like, I'm talking to my council members here, you know? I, I sat on that board, and it's a very important board, with a lot of things that need to be changed that, going forward, you know, with these appointments, I'm very against them, just, you know, so we're all, so we're all clear. So, and I, I don't know if I can ask for an individual vote on this. I don't know about the ANA. Everybody can say that. I would like an individual vote, you know, just so we're clear on if it's gonna go through or not, so. Yes, sir, yes. Do I gotta bring a motion or anything to the?
No, I'm happy to do it. I thought you were the only nays, so, okay. Roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mayor Barnes?
Definitely yes.
Bye-bye.
All right, so Kate Noriko and Veronica Orjil has been appointed. The last piece on this for, so that all the council members know, and, and I know Alderman Walker knows too, there's a lot of training, time and energy from the Police Department that went into it. They, this is a brand-new commission that we formed. This is, uh, two years they've been serving, I think it was.
Two, three?
Yeah, two. So it was really just a reappointment of two people that have been showing up dedicated, trained on this, that I thought it'd be.
Well, I won't say we're dedicated.
Let me just finish real quick. I just thought it'd be appropriate to renew.
But, but just don't, you know, don't say that they've been dedicated, because I was on the board.
Sure.
So I, I, I just want truth. I don't want, you know, no, I just want truth, sir.
It's just perspective.
Well, I was on it, so it wasn't perspective, it was the truth.
And I've talked to other members of the board.
I was there. I was a board member. I was there.
All right, so they're approved. Number three, reappointing Tony Chulick to the Board and Fire Police Commissioners for a three-year term through December 31st, 2026. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Questions or comments? I'm gonna do roll call. It's just easier. Or not roll call, sorry. Can we just do all in favor, unless someone has an issue? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, same sign. All right, moving on to number four, reappointment, reappointing Brad Hoy and appointing Al Ferris to the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission, each for a three-year term through December 31st, 2026. Can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Zazada. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, same sign. All right, number five, reappointing Andre Powell to the Human Relations Commission for a three-year term through December 31st, 2026. Can I have a motion to bring that to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Larson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, same sign. All right, moving on to Agenda Item G, the Consent Agenda. Number one, minutes of the Special City Council Meeting of January 4th, 2024. Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of January 8th, 2024. Accounts payable and payroll through January 22nd, 2024, in the amount of $5,602,652.37. And number four, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report for November and December 2023. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Zazada. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven aye.
All right, the consent agenda has been approved, as is. Moving on to agenda item H, public hearings. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and open the first public hearing, uh, which is a public hearing regarding the FY 2024 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan. And I'm opening it at, is it 6:50 or 7:50?
Yep.
Seven, oh, six, six fifty, thank you. Uh, gavel, great. Uh, anyone here for public comment on this one? Hearing none, any discussion with council members? Hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:50. Um, moving on to agenda item two for public hearings. Uh, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at, is it still 6:50? All right, 6:50. Uh, and this is a public hearing regarding a proposed annexation agreement for a property located at 11921 Illinois Route 38, Marker Properties LLC?
Marker.
Marker, geez. Marker Properties LLC. Uh, is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak during this public hearing? Hearing none, council discussion? And we're gonna be talking about this in a minute, so. All right, uh, with that, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:51. It's gotta be, right? All right, 6:51. Woo! All right, uh, then moving on to agenda item I, considerations. We have none. Then agenda item J, resolutions. Number one, resolution 2024-008, approving the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, one-year use of funds for program year 31, April 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2025. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Zazada, seconded by Alderwoman Larson, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, this is, as you mentioned, uh, by reference, the last year of a five-year plan. Uh, next year, we'll be talking about both the five-year plan and the first annual action plan of that five-year plan. Uh, as you know, the Community Development Block Grant Program is through the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. Uh, this year, our allocation is expected to be somewhere in the vicinity of about $375,000. That's down from the core allocation gradually, uh, not substantially, but somewhat down. Uh, and we've seen this trend, except for the COVID years when we did get some extra allocations come our way, and we're very grateful for that. Uh, but within that, and, and that's just an estimate, we won't know until April what the final number will be. Uh, a budget is presented to you tonight, and we asked for council action on this. There's not a lot of latitude for you. You've already allocated or promised $125,000 for the project launch pad, uh, which Opportunity DeKalb was, uh, the applicant for just before the end of the year. And, uh, also the HUD caps the, the amount that can go to public services. You'll see below at the bottom of your page four, that allocation, it's $56,334, which is the 15% threshold. And then, uh, in, in recent years, and this is part of what we'd hoped, some people would comment on in the public hearing portion, uh, there's been an uptick in persons with limited means looking for help with, uh, the rehab of their homes. Sometimes it's roofing repairs, sometimes it's weatherization and the like. And we put what we can toward that. Uh, and then there's also something for the administration, our administrator, uh, local administrators, Jennifer Yocum, who's our community services coordinator. Uh, it doesn't, that, that's the, the overall application, allocation that's proposed to you tonight. And the, the agencies are identified below for that $56,000 plus for public services. Recommend your approval.
Uh, questions or comments, council? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Upstain.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six aye.
All right, resolution 2024-008 passes. Uh, we do have public participation for resolution 2024-009 from Eric Armstrong. Eric? Yeah, come on up to the podium. Uh, I have to let everyone know, you have three minutes, and I have to hold everyone to three minutes. Uh, so if you cover it in that time, it'd be fantastic.
I promise you that.
Awesome.
Uh, first off, thanks, uh, nice to be here this evening, uh, and thanks to Bill. Uh, first off, I am representing the DeKalb Area Lotto Club, uh, which is down on Fourth and Lakus. Uh, our, our main objective at the club, or, and I'm the vice president, president-elect of the club, uh, is to actively hold, uh, meetings for Alcoholics Anonymous. Um, I will tell you, and sending in this, in the presence of you, I've been in the sobriety world for 26 years, coming up on 27 years. Uh, the facility itself, uh, we hold 25 meetings at that club weekly. Um, we get, mm, two, two, 300 people that come in, uh, to the meetings weekly uh, to share their experience, strength, and hope. And with our doors open, and we are a non-for-profit organization, uh, the idea is that we are allowing people to come in and recover. And, you know, the, the active addiction and alcoholism affects every single person in some shape or form. And our idea is to be able to provide a safe space for people to come in. With that being said, the, uh, the, the request, so to speak, that our club is asking for is the ability to change and facilitate the locks with security. Um, we have a very safe, secure place, but our locks that are in place are very antiquated, and they could use some adjustment. And so for us, we came up with a respectful bid from a local contractor. We kept the business local, and we were just asking for a specific amount to help put in a key fob system and a tracking system for our club so that we know who's coming in and going out. And the club is a very user-friendly facility. We have two open public meetings a week, and then the rest of them, um, I'm telling you, it is a great place to be.
Awesome.
That's why I'm here, and I'm, I'm here to represent the club. And anything else, if you have any questions, I'm here to help answer.
I'm sorry, I missed the name of the club. You said blank club, and I missed.
That's, that's okay. Uh, so the name of the, our, it's called the DeKalb Area Lotto Club. And we are strictly, um, we are a club that actually operates and facilitates for Alcoholics Anonymous.
Oh, Al-Anon, got it, got it, got it.
Absolutely, we have two of those.
I just kept not hearing it right.
Sure, of course, of course.
Alderman Verbic.
Yes, sir.
So as, as a lifer here, I never, I just saw Al-Anon. I had no idea what that meant until I, until this came across. And when I saw that, I'm like, now that makes a lot of sense. Thank you for all, for all you do with that.
Absolutely. It's, you know what? It is absolutely my pleasure and my honor to, to, to help people recover. You have no idea the gift that it brings me and, uh, other people to watch another person change their lives. It's simply amazing.
That's great, thank you, Eric.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, I need a motion to bring resolution 2024-009, authorizing human services funding agreements in the amount of $225,000 with local social service agencies beginning July 1st, or January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbic, uh, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. And I want to thank Mr. Armstrong for coming out and taking time this evening to say a few words about, uh, his, uh, uh, club's, uh, application. Uh, so, uh, we have been, uh, providing additional funding for our social service agencies and local clubs and not-for-profits for, um, well, really since the mid-eighties. Uh, those of you, I don't think probably anybody's in the room who remembers the federal revenue sharing program in the seventies and eighties, but it was drying up. And there are a lot of smaller cities like ours who were kind of used to having some additional money, apart from CDBG money, that might be available to us. Federal tax money coming back to the community, so to speak, and that, uh, pretty much dried up. So at first, uh, the city committed, uh, back in 98, $184,000, and it got, kind of stuck at that number until '22, when we went up to $200,000. It's a $225,000 proposed this year as part of the budget that you approved in December. Uh, we have, uh, less money to give out than there are, uh, dollars requested. And you can see a chart to that effect, uh, on some of the pages in your background, pages six through, uh, seven. And there's a lot of detail here. We, this year, uh, are, are looking to, uh, allocate, uh, to, to five new applicants. Uh, there are 20-plus from, from, as a carrier, I guess you would say, who, who annually are looking for some extra funds to help with their valuable services and operations. Uh, and I have highlighted those newer applicants, uh, just for your reference point. Uh, the total available, again, was $225,000 based on what you allocated in the budget. We had 304, almost 305,000, uh, in, in requests. And the individual allocation is a very tough thing to do. We have a, a, a city, uh, committee that does the first, uh, review, first pass. Uh, it's a diverse commi-, uh, committee that, uh, represents not only our departments, but, uh, uh, in terms of race and ethnicity is, is also diverse because we have a diverse community, and we serve, uh, all, all people. So, uh, that came to me, and I made just some slight modifications. I was trying to look at, uh, again, considering the, the limited funds, uh, trying to spread it as evenly as we could. So what's before you, I think, is a pretty, uh, even-handed, uh, proposal, and we recommend your approval. And I want to thank Jennifer Yocum, who, uh, is a person, not me, who deals on a regular basis uh, with the applicants and also with those who have received money. Uh, it's not just, here's the money, good luck, uh, there's reporting, that's expected. And at the end of the year, we also want to know what was accomplished, what, what was able to be done with the money that was allocated to you from this, uh, rather modest fund. So, uh, we, I, I'm very grateful to her for her service, and, uh, it's helped a lot in putting together this list.
Questions or comments, council? Yes, Alderman Perkins.
I'll echo, um, Bill's thoughts for, for Jennifer Yocum. Thank you for making yourself available to answer a couple of questions. I had in some things, so, thank you.
Awesome. Other council members? Hearing none, great list, uh, just a ton of wonderful organizations in there. Um, it's really cool to be able to do our small part in, in the large part that they play within our community. Um, let's go ahead and do roll call, then.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Upstain.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six aye.
Resolution 2024-009 passes. Number three, resolution 2024-010. Oh, yeah, and if you're here from one of those organizations, by all means, you're more than welcome to head on out. We appreciate you coming out tonight, in case we had any questions. All right, resolution, uh, 2024-010, authorizing a permanent easement agreement uh, for the railroad right-of-way for a rail spur at eight, at grade crossing at Krego Road. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Larson, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. The Chicago West Business Center has been working for a number of years now with us and with, uh, some of the, the companies that have, uh, invested in and have developed property in the Chicago West Business Park to, um, uh, create, uh, this permanent easement agreement. It goes across a number of properties. It will be, uh, the intent is to be able to provide a pathway for rail service across the north tier of those properties that are part of the Chicago West Business Center that's north of Gurley Road. Uh, it happens to cross Krego Road, which is a city road now. Used to be a small township road a long, long time ago. It's now no longer. And there are lots of things to be concerned about. Uh, the, the traffic that will be there won't be like what we see every day on the U.P. corridor, but, uh, there will be cars and however number they are, whether it's 10 or 15 or whatever, and some will be kept for a period of days and then moved back and forth. We want to make sure for our purposes that, uh, the road is not blocked, except momentarily. Uh, there will be obviously safety, uh, provisions that are made for this like any other crossing. Uh, but also, we want to make sure that this, this rail is successful for the companies that are also going to be investing a lot into it. So this is a private spur, not a public spur. So, uh, what's before you, and I, I want to thank our city attorney for working on this and, and our city engineer for working on this, uh, at length for a period of months. It's a good collaboration, it just, we have lots of layers of, of legal, uh, assistance on this. So, uh, it's before you tonight, we strongly recommend your approval.
Council, questions or comments? Might have been understatement of the year. I was on a few of these conversations. When you bring in every utility and everything that happened to get us to this point, oh my gosh. Um, but this is great, because this helps further spur economic development out there, so, uh, excited about it. It's nice to put this to bed. Uh, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Resolution 2024-010 passes. Resolution 2024-011, authorizing agreements for aviation and storage tank liability insurance coverage effective January 1st, 2024 through January 1st, 2025, in the amount of $41,068. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Zazada, seconded by Alderwoman Larson, city manager.
Thank you. I want to, I thank, uh, Michelle Anderson for putting this together for us. As you know, back, uh, in the last meeting in November, the council approved the, the main package of liability and worker cop, um, policies. Uh, this one deals with, uh, a few riders, uh, one for airport and one for underground storage tank liabilities that attend our fuel center, uh, on market. Uh, the, uh, we went to bid, the, the coverages that are there, uh, total of $41,068. We recommend your approval.
Questions or comments, council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Resolution 2024-11, 011 passes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2024-011 passes. Number five, resolution 2024-012, authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Kubota? Oh, Kubota M5-091 HDC 12-1 utility tractor with a seven-foot mowing deck from Decane Equipment Corporation in an amount not to exceed $71,112.57, Fund 420. Can I have a motion to bring to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The Assistant Director of Public Works, Sandy Ry, put this together. And before I go any further, just rolling that name off my lips reminds me that tonight is his birthday, or today is his birthday. So happy birthday to Andy Ry. He's just 29 today. And before the celebration week began, he was able to put this together for you. And this is a, an expenditure that was planned in our city budget in Fund 420, which is a vehicle replacement budget. And the utility tractor replaces a 1988 John Deere utility tractor. Decane Equipment has included pricing for both the vehicle and the accessories for mowing, and we recommend your approval.
Council?
I was happy with my 54-inch duck, seven feet, man.
All right, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2024-012 passes. Number six, resolution 2023-013, authorizing the purchase of two Ford Escapes and two F-350 pickups with snowplows through Morrow Brothers Ford to be utilized in various divisions within the city of DeKalb in an amount not to exceed $208,824, Fund 420. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Verbic, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This required a lot of work by Mr. Ry, because it's a little bit of everything here. We've got a couple of replacement pickups, the larger variety of F-350s. We've got a crime-free housing bureau vehicle and a replacement vehicle for a building department vehicle that's just died. It's not operable anymore. We've tried every way to get it alive again, we couldn't pull it out. So the total budgeted allocation for this was a little over 211,000. And I want to thank Mr. Ry for coming in with a total cost of $208,824. We're using the state purchasing system here, so we've got the lowest bids we can find anywhere. Morrow Brothers happens to be the, we've talked about that vendor in the past, they're pretty active and they match all those state purchasing thresholds, so we recommend your approval.
Council? Hearing no questions or comments, roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson? Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2024-013 passes. Number seven, resolution 2024-014, authorizing the purchase and equipping of two 2023 Ford F-150 trucks through the Morrow Brothers Ford for the DeKalb Fire Department in an amount not to exceed $120,000, using ground emergency medical transport, GEM-T funding, Fund 130. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first two, as I mentioned, the first two purchases that you've approved tonight came from Fund 420. Fund 130, which is a GEM-T funding source, is what's in play here. We are looking to, with budgeted monies, to replace two older staff vehicles. One was a 2001 Chevy Suburban, the boat, the big boat, and it's died. And a 2007 Tahoe, which I had my eyes on, but as a City Manager, I didn't participate in this, so it's not going to last much longer either. We got a commitment from Morrow Brothers, again, from Greenfield, Illinois, to provide two replacements, their F-150 trucks. They will be capped out and rigged up, but the GEM-T budget can comfortably absorb these within its budgeted threshold, so we recommend your approval.
Council, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson? Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2024-014 passes. Number eight, resolution 2024-015, authorizing an architectural, that's in the TIF, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I got to accuse myself from this. Hey, we did talk about, it was brought to our attention about having a vote on who's going to have the gavel, so what's the procedure for that?
If you call for, if you're going to rotate like that, somebody would have to make a motion to serve as the presiding chair for this.
Okay, I need a motion for someone to be the presiding chair of this particular agenda item.
I'll move Alderman Verbic, second.
This was brought up by Alderman Verbic.
And then you can voice vote it. Yeah, you got to vote on the motion.
Oh, roll call, please?
You can do a voice, if you want.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign? All right. The reason I'm stepping up, for those of you that don't know, I own a commercial building in the TIF district, and by Illinois state statute, I cannot participate in the conversation, so I will leave the room and hopefully be back really soon.
But I think we should pass the gavel, a different conversation for those that want to participate. So whatever we need to do to implement that practice, I think that others should participate if they wish. Resolution 2024-015, authorizing an architectural improvement program, AIP, economic incentive for Martin Garcia, owner of DeKalb Fresh Market, at 304 North Sixth Street, in the amount of $25,000. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Zazada. City Manager.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, his family and extended family and friends and neighbors worked for 16 months to convert what was once a commercial building for very different purposes to a very nice grocery store and small restaurant over on Sixth and Oak. Mr. Garcia has presented some requests for, and there's a lot of detail in your background about the electrical, the HVAC, the plumbing changes that had to be made. He spent, hard dollars, about $130,000 probably, to renovate and to transform this old building. And there was a lot more, I guess you would call it sweat equity, a lot of people just showed up to help out and worked with our building department all through this. I think he understood, when we talked about this being a reimbursement program, that he would be reimbursed at some point after. So we got the application a little late in the game, but I think it's merited, it's one of, it transforms that corner, it's, it's, it's a family business, it's been involved over on North 11th Street for a long time and serving community, and it's, I think, a very fitting grant request, and it hits all the marks for the 50% reimbursement in terms of life safety equipment, and electrical, mechanical, and plumbing upgrades, and so I've recommended the full, the limit that we have is 25,000, so I've recommended the full amount for your consideration tonight, and I hope you all agree.
City Council, any comments, questions? Alderman Zazada?
I will just say, I'm super excited that they've chosen to invest, and I remember when they began this project, and it's really exciting to see it come to fruition.
Alderman Smith?
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Zazada. I've been in there, I can't tell you how many times, he's doing a fantastic job. He, there's a lot of people that go in there, so he's really changed it, and he's told me he is doing very well. He's been working with a couple of the other shops in town, the bakery at 11th and Pleasant, 11th and Pleasant? Leo is involved also in there, so they're doing quite well, so I'm for this.
Anything further from council? Hearing none, Ruth, please call the roll.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Six I?
Motion passes.
All right, now we have resolution 2024-016, authorizing an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with Northern Illinois University for the coordination of integrated transit services. Can I have a motion to bring to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in October 2018, the city of DeKalb, Northern Illinois University entered an IGA that set up the transfer of what used to be called the Husky Line to what's now the city bus system. And as part of that, there was negotiated an agreement that provided for funding from Northern Illinois University, based on a number of factors, the expected ridership, you know, our costs and how that figures in per ride and so forth. And it was a five-year deal, this is to extend it. There's a lot of depth to the background that I want to thank Mike Noon-Kirchen, our transit manager, for pulling together. And there's even more in your, in the background to this cover memo. But there are a couple of changes I wanted to bring to your attention. The initial arrangement was for NIU to provide about 40% of the reimbursement that was due and for the operations. And we have always opened our books and we looked at the actual ridership, which has gone down, and their portion you would think will go down dramatically. But our costs have gone up too, and that is a factor in this consideration. And by factoring those two together, there was a slight diminishing of the NIU contribution that's recommended in this revised IGA, from 40 to 35%. One other thing remains about the same, and that is that we have a very robust Route 19, which goes down to the South Business Park and Park 88, Gurla Road, that area. In the past, the match was at 20%, just because that Route 19 doesn't carry many, it carries some students, but for the most part, not full-time students that are paying out of their fees for the bus service. And so we reduced that contribution down to 20% again this year, and that's, we think, a fair match. So the total is $2,415,115 for this year, and we recommend your approval.
Council, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution 2024-016 passes. Moving on to Agenda Item K, ordinances, second reading. We have none. Moving on to Agenda Item L, ordinances, first reading. We have number one, ordinance 2024-004, authorizing an annexation agreement with Marker Properties LLC for the property located at 11921 Illinois Route 38. Can I have a motion to bring to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Zazada, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney Kevin Buick and the owner Craig Mark are in the audience tonight and would be available to answer any questions you may have. So this is a little different. Usually we do something called an annexation agreement with a contiguous property. Owners are working out the rules of development, if you will, over future years. Some of the same things are true, we're working out what was expected in terms of the outcomes from the development. But this particular property is close but not contiguous. It's about 500 feet away along the Route 38 corridor. Interesting thing, though, the business that Mr. Mark currently owns, CNH Plumbing, has been a part of our community for a long time. And when we were first approached, said, look, we love being in DeKalb, we have an opportunity to make a business arrangement with a neighbor on Wurlitzer Drive, where we have been located for a long time, and we're going to move to some property that we can secure, but we don't want to be so far away from DeKalb that we can't be part of your community again, where we are. That's a lot of juggling going on on their end. And we thought, well, we can facilitate this by working out an agreement that will define the terms, not only what will happen if you become contiguous, but while you're building, so that when you do become contiguous, we like what we see, and it's in conformance with our zoning and building codes, that that'll be laid out in the agreement. And we've been working on that now for a period of months. I want to thank our city attorney, working with Mr. Buick, and there's also been negotiations going on with the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. In both cases, water and sewer are 1,000 feet away. We're somewhere just east of the intersection at Route 38 and Peace. And the cost of extending that is prohibited. It would be serious for some of our larger business developments on the south side, it is just infeasible that it could be afforded by a small entrepreneur that's trying to maintain a really sound and a good business, but it's just on a scale that can't absorb that kind of cost. So we laid out the terms, I've defined those, summarized them in your background. There are a couple pieces before you tonight, we've already had a public hearing, which is appropriate for the zoning piece. This is the annexation agreement itself, lays out the terms. The next piece is the zoning, and we needed a public hearing for that, and we'll get to that if you are willing to pass this first piece, and we hope you will.
Questions or comments, council?
Alderman Larson?
I drive by there almost every day, going to our farm, and just the cleanup you've done. If that's all you do, it's so much better for the entrance to DeKalb. If you could just get the next house to the west, that'd be even better. We'll say that for another day, but yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance 2024-004 passes on second reading. Hey, since no one attended the public hearing, we have unanimous approval for council, is it inappropriate to ask for waiving second reading? Awesome. I would take a motion to waive second reading? Just sticking around.
So moved.
All right, moved by Alderman Walker, seconded by Alderman Zazada. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-004. Then number two, ordinance 2024-005, approving the zoning petition of Marker Properties LLC to rezone certain property located at 11921 Illinois Route 38 to the PDI Plan Development Industrial District to allow light industrial uses, including a plumbing company in a proposed six-lot subdivision. Can I have a motion to bring to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins, City Manager.
Thank you. As you know, in recent years, as we've seen some redevelopment and new development, we have preferred to work out a plan development concept, which works for not only the applicant, but also for the city, gives us some flexibility in layouts. Also, we can come up with some creative ways to deal with the appearance of the site and also more mundane things, such as the time in which you're going to get water and sewer there, and what happens if you want to expand, as in this case, over time and have a cul-de-sac as time goes along, utilities are brought to the area. So that's what's really the heart of what's proposed to you tonight. What's also, I should just mention, the cul-de-sac, that would ultimately be built out, if all goes well, would be a private drive, and that would have access to Webster Road, not to Route 38. The existing well on the property is adequate, based on what we know from the Public Health Department, and that can be used in the early going for the relocation of the business and maybe one outbuilding, and then after that, we'll have to wait till the water is there. There's a pretty good chance, there's already been annex, not annexation, but there's been acquisition of property to the east on the south side of the corner at Peace and 38, and I think that continuity here will be secure sometime in the not-too-distant future, but we don't have, I can't give you a firm date when that will be, but I think it's very likely that will happen. So the zoning is appropriate, the six-lot subdivision that is included here is in conformance with our UDO requirements, and we recommend your approval.
Council, questions, comments?
Well, I should have mentioned, I should have mentioned last time on the last piece, too, the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended this for your, sorry.
No worries. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance 2024-005 passes on first reading, I'd make a, I'd allow a motion to waive the second reading?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Zazada. Any comments or questions on waiving second reading? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-005. All right, so we did our part, now the heavy lifting, so thanks for your continued investment, appreciate you. Have a great night. All right, moving on to number three, ordinance 2024-006, approving a special use permit to allow retail tobacco store at 830 and 834 West Lincoln Highway, Mohammed Majid. Majid?
Yes, sir.
Um, did I say it right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you got it. Uh, can I have a motion bring it to the floor? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbig, seconded by Alderman Larson. Uh, first, city manager.
Mohammed, are, are you looking to say, have a few words to, or? Sure. I, I mean, it's up to the mayor.
I don't know if we have any questions. You're welcome to say a couple of words, but we can ask you to come up if we have questions, too. Okay, all right.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're a little eager to get up there, so I was going to say, yeah. Uh, so, uh, the owners are in the audience tonight. Uh, the, uh, the special use, uh, is, is required because, uh, whereas when, when this store was started, uh, the U D O wasn't in existence, but it is now required special use for tobacco stores, as, uh, Dan Olson pointed out in his background to this agenda. So, uh, the current location is eight eighteen West Lincoln Highway, which is in the Junction Shopping Center. And the intent here is to move this just around, uh, the corner to the south. Uh, and on the other leg of that L-shaped, uh, main portion of the shopping center to eight thirty, eight thirty four, West Lincoln Highway. Uh, as you can see on the, uh, graphic here, uh, the, uh, the current store will, uh, is smaller than the new location, and it's one of the reasons why, uh, the intent is to relocate. Uh, and, um, this comes to you, as I said, because a special use permit requires, uh, Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission review and then ultimately your approval. So Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at this, uh, meeting on the sixteenth, uh, and, uh, recommended your approval, and, uh, we support that.
Come, Alderman Zizata.
Um, is there a good reason to continue to have this requirement, uh, city manager?
Uh, the requirement for a special use?
Well, like, they're just moving down the way.
Yeah, yeah, right. So this is anomaly. Normally, uh, you know, we would have, if it had happened, say, in the last fifteen years, there wouldn't be this step, but because the U D O wasn't in place then, it is now. And it's saying, so it's, it's a, it's a legal, uh, requirement of our own code that says in all these, uh, a new location, a new, uh, store in effect, even though it's continuation, the ownership has to go through this process.
Okay.
Alderman Walker.
Hey, is this going up in the old Wired Nutrition? All right, so I got to, first of all, I, I need to ask somebody, why, like, no one just sees, like, understands, why do we have, like, three or four smoke shops, like, all on walking distance? That's my first issue. And that has nothing to do with you, but, you know, I wouldn't be doing my job if I asked you. Can you get up here, please, sir? I'm, I'm here to say.
Yeah, no problem.
I'd be mad, but I just got a question, man, because it seems like these days, I'm the only one that wants to ask these types of questions, so.
No, absolutely. The, the two shops that just opened up, they just opened up, and we've been there for a long time.
No, I get you. I don't care about that. The point is, they're all still there, so that's my, so let me ask you this. So you want a bigger space, right? Because you got more products coming in, I suggest, right? Or with the?
Well, no, we got the same products. We just, I mean, we just want to.
Just bigger room.
We just need more space, really, just for the convenience, I mean.
Okay. And, you know, and just so you guys know, I always tell people I'm the U P S man in that area, so I know all the people around you. And some of your, you know, some of your, uh, partners, you know, not partners, some of your, uh,
Employees?
Neighbors, some of your neighbors, they're, they're kind of concerned because, I mean, I guess, you know, you guys had, you know, a few disturbances, you know, throughout the past three years. Because if I, if I'm correct, you guys only owned that business for three or four years or more than that?
Well, we were managing the business before and now I'm the owner. Okay. I was managing it prior.
Okay, so when you started owning it, let me ask you that.
I've been the, I've been, I mean, I've been owned it for the past four years.
Okay, yes, well, okay, so, but just let me ask you this, for me. You know, what can you do to ensure me that? Because I got, you know, I have a report of all, you know, the disturb, you know, the disordered conducts and, you know, um, I guess a parent, you know, said you guys sold to her kid. And, I mean, I have it right here.
Oh, okay. You know, no, I'm listening to what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, so I guess my only thing is, what can you do to ensure me? And it's not really about the building for me. Me personally, I just don't like smoke shops, you know, around, like liquor stores. That's just my opinion. But, um, what can you do to assure, you know, your neighbors that, you know, some of these disturbances won't go on because there are?
Well, I mean, what disturbances? I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, we can get a police report and you, and you can just, you know, you know, just go.
I mean, I rarely have disturbances. I, you, you started talking about.
Okay, well, I just go to the last, okay, the, the most recent one.
Yeah.
It was a domestic dispute on, uh, twelve twenty, twenty twenty-three. So maybe then your employees didn't tell you.
A domestic dispute?
Yeah, it was a domestic dispute. I, I mean, I don't know. I went there, I don't know who was fighting or what it was about. So, this, ah, well, anyway.
I mean, it's a business, so I mean, if it's domestic, that's something domestic.
No, I get it, it's a business, but it still happened at your place. It, it's still, it's because of your place.
Isn't a domestic meaning, like, something happening in a household?
I think it usually means between people in a romantic relationship.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't know what domestic, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, so two people were fighting, man, woman, whoever the case may be. It was, it was something where the police had to be called.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying. So all these, all these are where the police had to be at your place of establishment.
I, I, I mean, I don't, I didn't hear about it.
Okay, all right, no, I get it. So basically, I just want to know from you, because you're the owner.
Yes.
Because I got to talk to you.
Yeah.
So what can you do to ensure that these types of things won't be happening anymore? I figure a bigger place, more people to come, me personally, more disputes. However, I just, you know, what could you do to, you know, just get your neighbors to feel comfortable about that?
I mean, I, we have two employees there majority of the time. I rarely have, I mean, I, 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 I don't know. I mean, I, I want to see that, too. I mean, I don't.
Well, it's, you can, yeah, you can do, you can talk to two birds.
I don't, I don't know what to tell you, because I don't really feel like that's an issue that I have.
Oh, well, I guess.
I'm sorry, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what I could do. I mean, I don't, I don't feel like it's an issue by me.
Oh, all right, well, if you don't feel like it's an issue, that's all I need, you know?
No, I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm sure the police gets called every once in a while, but. I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what you're, what, what you're looking at, so.
Yeah, well, I'm just looking at, you know, all the complaints that your service had and.
Complaints?
I mean, it's, hey, it's, hey, it's, it's, well, here's my thing. Do your workers report to you when the police are called to your establishment?
Yes.
And they haven't lately, right?
I mean, this, this twenty, this, 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 that was, what, a couple of days before Christmas? No.
I mean, that's all I can go, is your word. All right.
I mean, I, I'll look into it, but I mean, I, I don't.
No, I appreciate it.
I mean, I don't want to have no ruckus or any.
No, 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 my thing is, you know, no.
I mean, I try to keep it clean. I, I run twelve other shops.
No, no, that's fine. I'm not worried about the twelve. I'm worried about the one in DeKalb.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. So I mean, I mean, I, I didn't get to where I, where I'm at, but, you know, just, you know.
No, I'm, I'm not saying you did, but all I'm saying, I just want answers on how you can assure your neighbors that things like of this nature is not going to be going in.
I can't answer the question, because I don't know, I don't know what you're speaking in regards to.
Well, here, I'm telling you, you, it's right here. You, you have had some disorderly conduct, things happen at your shop. That's what I'm telling you, I know it. The police don't make up things. We can't make up things.
I'm not saying that anybody made anything up.
So I'm just asking you, what can you do to ensure that it's going to be a nice, clean environment and not have disorderly conducts and things of that nature go on? That's all I'm asking you, it's nothing else.
That, sir, that's all you're saying, is to your knowledge, you will try and run the best business you can?
No, absolutely, a hundred percent.
And in a safe environment, be good to your neighbors.
Yep, absolutely, I mean, I would.
But no one, hold on, my thing is this, though, and I know there's rules and regulations, but no one sees, like, a problem with smoke shops just being all, like, right next door to each other? Then we want to, you know, be mad at.
John, I, I, we can have that conversation. I just, right now, we have a, a business owner that is investing in our community, and he's just trying to move, and that's all we're approving right now.
Well, no, that's fine, no, no, that's fine, Cohen, but, yeah, a lot of people invest in our community. Just because he's investing in the community doesn't mean we just automatically just push things through just because, you know, he's investing in the community. I'm just going with, you know, what I'm seeing. I know you don't have a, I know that you don't have firm footing with some of these kids, but I do. And, you know, there was a parent that reached out to me about, you know, this particular store.
None of us have seen these police reports, none of us know.
Why, well, then, you should do your homework and go see the reports. When things like this happen, that's what you should do.
Okay, you're right.
That's just, that's just common sense of being a council member.
Sure, yeah. Alderman Walker, I can say one to your, to your question, is that if we, a condition of the special use is their continuing compliance with our codes and applicable law. Right now, I mean, they technically have to comply with that right now, but because they're not a special use, uh, this is, this is, we could revoke their ability to actually operate uh, if there was a pattern of, of non-compliance, uh, that was proven and, you know, due process was given. So actually granting this would allow us to have greater control over some of the things that you've discussed.
Thanks for that clarity, sir, I appreciate it.
And the conversation around additional smoke stops in our community would be no different than video gambling, uh, which we've had those conversations at council, and I think this is a concern. It has nothing to do with you, Mohammed.
Yeah, no, absolutely. No, it's not personal.
No, I'm not, a hundred percent.
But ultimately, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to have that conversation. We can put a cap on video gambling, we can always put a cap on this. Um, so that can be an agenda item in the future, absolutely. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Zizata?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for investing in the community.
You're welcome, ma'am. I, I try, honest to God, I try not to have, but, I mean, I, I, I know he's, what he's saying, I mean, I'm, I'm sure.
I understand, we appreciate your feedback.
I, I just don't know to answer, I don't want to sound like, you know.
You're good, you're good.
Thank you.
All right, uh, any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbig?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Zizata?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero zero six passes on first reading. I think a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by, uh, Alderman Smith. Uh, any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbig?
Yes.
Walker?
No.
Zizata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Uh, ordinance two zero two four dash zero zero six passes on second reading. You are all set, sir, and thanks for investing in our busy community. All right, moving on to agenda item M, Reports and Communications. Uh, Alderman Perkins, you want to kick us off?
No report.
Uh, Alderman Larson.
Um, I have three things, um, and I, I hope you've been hearing this for the last two weeks, um, Andy, that streets, every person in your department, I mean, the mountains of snow. And I came back, like, two days later, and it's like, they're gone. I mean, amazing, and now ice, and I was driving through, um, fabulous. And then, on a sweeter note, if anybody tried the new cookie shop, Crumbles, um, it's, it's, it's going to be a hard one to resist, it's very good. And, and the third thing I have to talk about, I'm not sure this is the right format, but I didn't know where else to put it in the meeting. Um, I always think of these reports, and I could be wrong, that it's like, what did I do for the last two weeks to tell you what I did in the city and what I saw? And then I want to share it with everybody. Um, and I don't think of it as a time for Barb Larson to get up and say, you know, I was thinking about something the other day, and I want to share it with all of you. I, I'm thinking, I want, I wanted this to be more just counsel. But I don't know, I, I don't find anything that limits us as to what we can say up here and for how long we can say it. We put three-minute time limits on all of our residents, and we get that, because at the school board meetings, it was going to be hours. And if we did fifteen minutes for us, that's an hour and twenty minutes. Love you guys, but I don't want this to turn into another hour and twenty minutes on top of the meeting. And I know the people there don't want it to be another hour and twenty minutes. So I'm just, I don't think it's, it's just to put a bee in your bonnet to think about it. But I think we should have some guidelines as a group as to what this forum is, because we have two people running for state office. At this rate, you guys could filibuster, and we could hear all about what you've done since high school as to why we should vote for you.
You're damn near doing it.
Not in on that either. You know, there's, um, newspapers, there's radio stations, we can hold public forums as, at ward meetings or whatever. So at some point, and I don't know if it's an agenda item down the way, or, or if I'm just flowing, flowing smoke, I don't know.
I think we do it informally, just as a group, but also, um, like, I was thinking, uh, there was a council meeting, meeting or two ago, and I talked for quite a bit, kind of setting the stage. But I have no guidance over, and I need to hold accountable this, too, but I have no guidance over time as well. Like, I, I, I get people looking at me sometimes, uh, at various circumstances, um, but it'd be helpful just as the guy running the meeting, what, 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 when can I start doing that? Uh, kind of thing. And that goes both ways. Uh, when do you all start? Uh, whenever I'm talking as well. So I, I, I agree, I'd like the council member reports to really be about what we're all doing in the community, just because there's a lot of stuff we don't cover in, uh, our agendas, um, that go beyond. And I think it's a real opportunity, especially for people in the community, to see what we're doing. Uh, this council men, what?
Sorry. He cleared his throat, no, so.
That's good.
Sorry.
Obviously, you have to do it louder, because I didn't.
Although. We do have closed session.
But, but, but it would, you're right, that's, that's a really good point on it. It would be nice to have a little guidance on that. So you're right, I don't think we have to decide it tonight, but maybe I'll reach out to each of you individually just for a little feedback on time and topics, um, just so I have a little help on how we're going to manage our meetings, if that sounds fair. Does that work for you?
Works for me.
Okay.
I, it was just something that I had to get off my chest, too. So, thank you for listening.
You good?
I think I'm good.
Alderman Zizata?
No report.
Uh, Alderman Smith?
Uh, yeah, Andy, thanks. Uh, and also to the residents, uh, it's going to start to warm up. Please get out and show the sidewalks, postmen and everybody else. There, some of the sidewalks, I swear, haven't been touched since last year. Uh, fire hydrants, chief, this is for you. Uh, there's a lot of them more this year that are not uncovered. You're going to really regret it if you can't get to a fire hydrant, so help them out a little, little bit. And, uh, oh, transit. Mike, uh, Mike and I had a little talk about how I was concerned about services, what I do on my side job. And, uh, they did a really fantastic job. I guess they were keeping on schedule, and so tell them thank you for that. And that's it.
Alderman Walker?
Alderman Walker?
Yeah, just to piggyback off what Alderman, Lady Larson said, me personally, I'm going to talk about what I want when I want to talk about it, and if people have to be here 45 minutes to an hour, that's just how it's going to be, that's the problem with city council and some of us, we just let things just go here and there, and we don't stand up, and we don't get the things out there, I'm not running for another election, so I don't really, I'm not, so I don't really, you know, care about all the extra stuff that everybody else has going on, the thing is, everybody just blows over everything that's important out here for their own agendas, and I'm tired of it, and I'm going to say what I want when I want to say it, period.
Well, I think we can all agree that we're going to have timeframes on it, because we do have to conduct city business, and you just accused all of us of not doing anything, not doing our jobs, and I definitely take offense to that.
Well, that's your problem.
But we will have some sort of guidelines going forward, in order to manage our meetings.
I hope it's legal.
What was that?
I hope, I hope it's legal.
Sure.
I hope it's legal, that's all I'm saying.
Alderman Walker?
Past DeKalb City Councils had that agreement, that it would be five minutes per council member presentation or comment, just a suggestion, I don't have anything in mind in particular, but I do have a special Ward 6, thank you, that is going to city manager Bill Nicholas. It was very early Friday morning, when I received a note that people in Ward 6 were without water, without heat, was there anything that we could do, contacted our city manager, and it was still early Friday morning when he deployed a building maintenance official and a fire prevention officer to the residents, and they are extremely grateful, so thank you.
Absolutely. For me, I'll echo what Alderman Larson was talking about with snow plowing, it was phenomenal, I heard rave reviews, Andy, even heard from a resident that a big chunk, kind of, ugh, came off the plow and completely crushed and buried them in their driveway, and a plow guy actually came back a little bit later to do a little bit of cleanup on that, knowing what a burden it was, but that's going above and beyond, and I think that continues to show your team's dedication, and I would say every department's dedication to our community, but it was really awesome, especially when you guys worked 21 hours, I think was straight, was one of your shifts, probably even more, but we won't cover that in a public setting, I know they worked really, really hard to make it happen, so that's a huge thank you. I did want to call out, I was at an Opportunity DeKalb meeting, again, we've helped fund that organization for, you know, a new initiative that they're trying to do in order to, and are you timing me, Alderman Perkins?
No, no, I'm not.
So, I'm waiting for that.
And I don't have anything on my stroll either.
But ultimately, the new initiative to, you know, have an entrepreneurial incubator for members in our community, and Chad Glover continues just to shine in that role, and it was just great hearing them talk about next steps and where they're at, and you can really see that organization coming together, which is great. I also attended a funeral of Donna Seldell, I don't know if any of you know the Seldells, but, you know, just, just a wonderful, wonderful family, and it was incredible to see the amount[1590.93]